For the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the best will with liberty and justice for all.
Let us bow our head in a moment of silence for those who lost their lives and were injured in the hatred fueled demonstrations in Charlottesville, Virginia this past weekend, and silently pray to cleanse the heart and mind of those who are consumed with such anger. Amen. Thank you. Righty, uh, Carmen roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Here.
Spitali.
Here.
Kelwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Higgs. Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakos.
Here.
Vines.
Here. Let the record reflect eight present, one absent. Moving on to reading of the minutes.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spitali.
The most accepted minutes from July 24, 2017.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson, to accept the minutes of July 24, 2017. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Okay, claims.
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman.
Move for approval of claims July 19, 2017 through August 9, 2017. For council meeting August 14, 2017, beginning with claims dated 8/1/17 and ending with claims dated 8/9/17, claim number 4526 through claim number 4901, for a total of $5,180,127.69, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Warple, to approve the claims from July 19 through August 9, 2017. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Carmen roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs. Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Let the record reflect eight in favor, one absent. Uh, motion carries to accept the claims from July 19 through August 9, 2017. Next is public hearings. There are none. After that, communications.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Torres.
Just got a, a letter here from the NAACP. They're having their annual luncheon on, uh, on Saturday, September 9th, at 12 through 3 at the Dynasty Hall. And one of the guests is gonna be, that they're gonna honor is Justice Robert D. Rucker, Indiana Supreme Court retired. So I just want to bring that to your attention.
Thank you. Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Moving on to committee reports. We had no committee meetings this evening. However, I would like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings in our city. Uh, before I do that, I would like to, uh, um, thank everyone who participated in National Night Out, um, a week ago tomorrow. Uh, it was, uh, another wonderful event. Our police force was, uh, was out in force and our fire department, not to mention our vendors and, uh, and everyone else who participated. It was a wonderful event and, uh, um, even a couple of raindrops couldn't hold back the, uh, the strong of Hammond. So, thank you all for, uh, taking the time to, uh, learn about safety prevention and awareness in our community. Um, coming up, the East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet on Tuesday, uh, August 15th, 6:30 PM at the Ophelia Steen Center. Uh, Hessville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, August 17th, at the Jean Shepherd Center at 7:00 PM. Uh, South Hammond Crime Watch will meet Thursday, August 18th, uh, I'm sorry, August 17th, uh, 7:00 PM at the Hammond Housing Authority Building. Uh, anyone who is interested in finding out about what is going on in your neighborhood, how you can keep your property and your family safe, I urge you to, um, attend any one of the, uh, crime watch meetings throughout our city because community is not just about me, it's about us. Committee reports now closed. Moving on to ordinance third and final reading. There are none. Introduction of ordinances.
1719, an ordinance creating a new fund, Fund Number 257, for the City of Hammond for purposes of receipting and accounting for the one-time special distribution of local option income tax funds.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I move for first and se- or first and second reading and to put it in Finance Committee on August 28th at 5:15 PM.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Warple. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Councilman Spitali for first and second reading of ordinance number 1719, uh, referred to Finance on August 28th with a, uh, meeting at 5:15 PM. Uh, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Carmen roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs. Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Uh, 1719 passes on first and second reading. Uh, eight in favor, one absent, uh, with a committee meeting, uh, in Finance on August 28th at 5:15 PM. That concludes introduction of ordinances. Resolutions.
Resolution 17R29, a resolution authorizing approval of Lear Corporation Development Agreement.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I move for passage of Resolution 17R29.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Emerson for final passage of 17R29. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Uh, Councilman Warple.
This is a resolution authorizing the approval of a development agreement that the city has reached with Lear Corporation. Um, they're not leaving the city, obviously. They are actually gonna build, if I have this correct, when I wrote it down, on the south side of Michigan Avenue, just east, east of the South Shore rail tracks. Currently, Lear employs 408 people at their facility on 165th Street. Um, it's estimated that up to 750 jobs could be coming to that facility. And, um, as far as the current building goes, Lear will maintain ownership and it's my understanding will look for, actively for a buyer for that building.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Carmen roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs. Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes. Uh, 17R29 passes, eight in favor, one absent. That concludes resolutions. Moving on to new and unfinished business. Any new and unfinished business?
Madam Chairwoman.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
Um, on August 23rd, the Finance Committee will be meeting to go over the city council budget. It's my understanding in that meeting is at, I didn't get the time on that.
4:00 PM.
4:00 PM.
In the caucus room.
That's all I had.
Okay. Uh, any other new and unfinished business?
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman Markovich.
This past week, um, the Optimist Club was home to, um, the Ten and Under All-Stars. Little, um, Cal Ripken and Councilman Warple was, uh, a star there one night where he was able to throw out one of the first pitches for one of the games and he threw a strike, but it was debatable how the umpire called it. Um, s- some of the things, talking to the people from Hawaii, I mean, that were here and, uh, they were, the Optimists were selling corn for $2 an ear. And that first night they were there a week ago, Thursday, the kids, uh, you know, were just going crazy. They were from Hawaii. And the coach even bought like 10 ears to take back to the, uh, hotel room after that for the kids to have. An ear of corn cost $7 in Hawaii. I mean, it was unbelievable what they were talking about. And they said even like a gallon of milk can cost anywhere from $8 to $9 for a gallon of milk in Hawaii. So, these kids were really treated, I mean, one night they took them to Minor Dunne for the, the hamburgers and, um, milkshakes and they never really had milkshakes like that before. Something that we take for granted, I guess, you know? And different, living in different parts of the world, you know, you're, you're able to get certain things and then you're not able to get certain things. Um, I know that the, talking to the ladies, I saw, Freddie Steakhouse had a thing, a prime rib dinner one of the days, you know, and they were telling me they went there and they wanted to get this big prime rib dinner, but they didn't serve it till like 4 or 5 o'clock while they had a game. So then they come to the Kennedy Cafe and had pancakes and bacon and eggs and so forth and that. But just, uh, Hammond made it down, well, they were 4-0 in pool play and then they lost, used in the top of the sixth to the one team. The only good thing about, well, it's not a good thing losing to that team, but the team that beat them ended up beating up, beating Hawaii. So they were, they won the whole World Series that night. And Hawaii was beating teams by anywhere from 10 to 17 runs per night at each game. And that. But then on another good note that all the parents are happy about this week is the kids are going back to school. So naturally, all the parents are happy. And there were several back to school things going on, supplies that, what I want to say right now is that the Hammond FOP at the Civic Center is having a back to school special for all the kids where they're getting haircuts and they're having food and fingerprinting and so forth and all of that. So, you know, anybody that's watching now doesn't know about it, I see, we see some kids here now that from 4 o'clock to 8 o'clock at the Civic Center, um, you know, can go over there and have a good time and, um, you know, the FOP's doing a, a good bang up job as far as presenting to kids and getting them acclimated. The policemen are their friends and if there's anything going on, don't, don't hesitate to go ahead and, um, talk to one of your policemen. Thank you.
Uh, and when is that, uh, FOP back?
It's going on now from 4 o'clock to 8 o'clock.
Oh, okay. Okay. Uh, I would like to elaborate on, uh, the, uh, the Cal Ripken World Series. Uh, just to, uh, let you know that there were teams from New Jersey, Alabama, Colorado, Connecticut, Oregon, uh, North Carolina, and Hawaii. Uh, I asked, uh, one of the coaches from the Hawaiian team, uh, how many fundraisers they had. They had four fundraisers and raised $30,000 for their children to come here and participate in, uh, that World Series tournament. So it was, uh, uh, quite impressive. And, uh, you saw a lot of people in the crowd and I want to tell you about a gentleman that I met, a Hammond resident. His name is Phil "Hambone" Hamilton. Anybody who is involved in, uh, Little League here in Hammond knows this man because he has been umpiring for the past 50 years. I'm going to read you an excerpt, uh, from the Congressional Record of the 115th Congress that was read in its entirety on Tuesday, April 25th, 2017. "Visklosky honors Phil 'Hambone' Hamilton. Mr. Speaker, it is my honor and privilege to stand before you and my fellow colleagues today to recognize Mr. Phil 'Hambone' Hamilton as he celebrates the 50th anniversary of his baseball and softball umpiring career. For his lifetime of devotion to the youth in the community of Northwest Indiana and beyond, through the, uh, through the sports, uh, sport of baseball and softball, Phil Hamilton is to be commended." It goes on to read, "As an umpire, he has called many games featuring, uh, future Major League Baseball players, Latroy Hawkins, Kenny Lofton, Lloyd McClendon, and Ron Kittle, to name a few. Players and coaches alike have observed Phil's enjoyment, pride, and passion for officiating, for officiating. Consequently, he is highly respected for his dedication, knowledge, and the fairness he brings to the game." Uh, this, that is just an excerpt from, uh, what was read into the Congressional Record, but I thought it was worth mentioning. Uh, it is people like this gentleman who give our youth an opportunity to, uh, participate in events such as we had, uh, this past week. So, thank you to Phil "Hambone" Hamilton, uh, for your dedication and, uh, uh, and all the work that you've done for our youth. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Uh, Councilman Kelwinski.
Thank you. As fall approaches and, and summer's ending and school's coming, uh, there's also a date that's coming in the fall and that's for the school referendum. And I, along with other residents, may be paying an additional real estate tax for a new 400,000 square foot middle school and high school, plus increased operating funds for existing school buildings. I recommend that residents of the first district and the entire city determine the financial impact of this school city referendum on their wallet and what it will mean for them on the real estate tax bill. Although the information from the school city states the average house in Hammond will pay $10.47 per month, your real estate tax bill is payable in one or two installments. That additional monthly tax of $10.47 is $125.64 if you pay your entire tax bill at one time, or $62.82 for the spring tax bill and another $62.82 for your fall tax bill. If your home is reassessed and, uh, the cost could be higher. I know that some homes in Hammond have been reassessed and have been, seen some significant increases. The impact of this referendum is especially important information for Hammond seniors and those on a fixed income. Each homeowner should determine the financial impact of the referendum on their home and their finances and then see if they can support the school city referendum. Hammond homeowners can get the added referendum cost to their real estate tax bill by going to the Hammond School City website at www.hammond.k12.in.us/referendum and then use the referendum calculator. I just wanted to provide this information now so that people can get a head start on this. And the form on, on the computer will look something like this. And you just fill in the numbers and see what you get back. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, incidentally, at our next council meeting, uh, Dr. Watkins will be here to address the council so, uh, everyone can prepare their questions.
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman Markovich.
Because of what Councilman Kelwinski brought up, it might be a good idea for Mr. Watkins to bring their financial consultants that are putting this referendum on and come back with some sample calculations on somebody's home that is $100,000 or $150,000 or $200,000. What is the actual good increase is gonna be because there's several, uh, how do you wanna say, um, calculations that whether you're doing it right or wrong or whatever, but you know, 12, $10 per month doesn't sound like a lot, but when they're talking $800 per 100,000 assessed valuation, that, that comes out to more than $12 a month as an increase. And I may be wrong and I stand to be corrected. So, Councilwoman, um, Vines stated that Mr. Watkins is coming, that we probably should send a letter that when he comes here brings off any and all information, examples of what, uh, the increase would be on a 100,000, 150,000 or $200,000 home, what the actual increase is gonna be. And give an explanation to us and, you know, the people that would be watching. And maybe we oughta just put it out there that, um, you know, would be a good council meeting to attend, that everybody will get a lot of information about the school referendum. And in this case, it probably would help the schools out to, to get their message across to everybody because none of their school board meetings, I guess, are on the internet or live or filmed or anything. And unless you go there, I mean, they, they, they have different rules as far as asking questions and giving out information. So this way, um, you know, we'll have public expression and people can even ask questions after that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Emerson.
Um, just parenthetically, that I think the school board meetings are on the school city website. If you click around, you can find them. But what I really wanted to say is I want to piggyback on what you said, Madam President and, uh, Councilman Markovich. Um, you know, I was there opening night at the Cal Ripken World Series. The weather was a little iffy, but then it, it cleared up and, and not to be redundant, uh, just glad to have it at Hammond and Mr. Godbolt and all the people that put it on. This is the second time we've had the World Series here and, uh, uh, the weather was great the rest of the way out. So, thank you.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman.
What Councilman Emerson said about the school city website and like what Councilman Kelwinski said, the majority of senior citizens don't have website knowledge or capability or so forth. So the only thing that's gonna happen is if this, um, referendum should pass, they won't know about it until they get their tax bill and then there's an increase on it. And then they're gonna be calling us and asking us questions about it. So, um, just because it's on the website, a lot of people aren't still able to answer that question or like Councilman Kelwinski said, use that sample, uh, form and fill out your taxes.
Any other new and unfinished business? You gonna say something?
I'll keep my mouth shut.
Okay.
You guys said it all about the World Series.
Okay. Already. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? No unfinished business is now closed. Public expression. Uh, the first speaker is Malik Barton. Is that correct? Uh, lives on South Harrison. Good evening, sir. If you would state your address and, um, you will have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, my name is Malik Burton. I'm eighth grade at Eggers Smith School. My, my concern is-
Could you speak up, please? We can't hear you. We know it's a little intimidating to be at the microphone, but we can hardly hear you.
My concern is a community center for the third district to improve the quality of lives for all at-risk youth.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. The next, uh, speaker is Matthew Burton. Matthew Burton?
Hello, uh, my name's Matthew Burton and, uh, I attend Hammond High School. Uh, tonight my concern is, uh, Little League field for, um, our third district. Um, I think that, um, if we had a Little League field, it will help the at-risk youth learn discipline, um, sportsmanship, and community values. Most importantly, to keep, um, many youth off the streets and out of harms way. Um, so basically I'm asking, how can, um, as a community, how can we, um, get a Little League field in our third district?
Thank you very much for your question. The next speaker is Ken Davidson.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Your address, please.
Uh, 7407 Montana Avenue, Hammond.
Thank you.
I just want to reiterate, I had the chance to attend some of the Cal Ripken, great event, um, brought a lot of people to the City of Hammond. And I also attended the groundbreaking ceremony, which all of you did, um, for the Hammond Sports Complex, which is gonna bring that many people on a regular basis to the City of Hammond, which I think is a great project for an area that's in need of redevelopment and for the City of Hammond. Um, but I also am here today to speak regarding public access. And there are two things that happened recently which caused me to come to speak. I generally watch you on television, on, on the internet, um, instead of coming to the meetings because it's just easier for me. I've gotten a little lazy over the years and so I, I enjoy the convenience of, of watching it from my home. Um, a couple of weeks ago, uh, I was asked about the caucus, which is held before the, uh, council meetings. And it's my understanding, um, and I, I recalled when I first came to a council meeting, I didn't know what was going on either. I saw everybody going in and out of the room back there and can I go in, can I not go in? Um, that's a public meeting and that should be noticed. And I looked around and I couldn't find any notice for the caucus meeting prior to the council. Um, all of the notices that I saw were just for the council meeting. There's no notice for the public meeting, uh, which, which includes more than a, a quorum of the council, I'm assuming, on a, on a regular basis. Um, and there's no public notice that I could find for that. Now, I could be wrong, maybe I missed it. I don't know. Um, additionally, I requested some public documents from the council office. Um, I was shown a letter, um, that was circulated among various public officials from the judge and, um, you know, there were some issues here before the council with the judge of the past couple of meetings. And so, I requested all the correspondence to or from the judge. Now, one of the things that shocked me was when I requested the documents, um, uh, Ms. Manes, who is the council secretary, said, "We don't keep any records here. Um, stuff comes in and it goes out and we never keep a copy of anything here." I, I could be wrong, but it's my understanding that public records have to be maintained for a certain period of time. And it's actually a crime to destroy public records outside of the regular schedule of document destruction. Additionally, I received a response to my public record request, which consisted of three, um, letters to and from the judge, two, looks like, um, two... One from the judge and two, to the judge from, uh, uh, both from, uh, Council President Vines. Um, the letter which I saw, which was in somebody else's possession, was not produced in response to my public record request. Now, I don't know if that's a result of not proper record keeping, or if you never got the letter, or what's going on. But the fact that there possibly are no records within the Hammond City Council Office is very troubling to me and troubling from the aspect of when records are requested, they should be properly produced.
Thank you very much.
So...
Already. Thank you. Next speaker is Joe Hero.
Joe Hero, 11723 South Oak Ridge Drive, St. John. I'd like to compliment the council and the mayor for their economic development projects that are going on and bringing jobs to Hammond and keeping Hammond alive. It's tough to do in a city like Hammond, but you guys are, are doing a good job of, uh, rebuilding the city and rejuvenating it. And I want to compliment you on that. Uh, the reason I'm here is, is simply this, a follow-up to Councilman Warple raised the issue on claim 3597 last time. If- If you look at your ordinance ninety-three sixty-three, in there it cites Indiana Code Thirty-three dash thirty-five dash one dash one. In your ordinance citing that, if you read that Indiana statute, it says that you can abolish the court every fourth year, starting two thousand six. So if you go two thousand six, two thousand ten, two thousand fourteen, you cannot abolish the court until you pass that ordinance in two thousand eighteen. So I think you should really look at that statute because I think your ordinance is invalid and that's gonna create a lot of chaos. So I bring that to your attention in a friendly way. It's just read the statute, read your ordinance, it refers to that. The other thing is if you read the draft complaint that Councilman Warple was discussing the payment for some legal services, read the draft complaint. I think the draft complaint is valid, that you cannot take the court out midstream of that term of which ends in nineteen. So I think you have that additional problem and anybody can take that complaint, put their name on it and file it. And if you, and they can do it at any time. And if they did it on January the first, two thousand nineteen, you would have the court for four more years, which I don't think was your intention. So the other issue that I bring up is simply this, I watched the videos from Mayor McDermott's program, very informative. If you look there, he mentions challenging the residency of the judge. And if you look at this statute, Indiana Code Thirty-three dash thirty-five dash one dash four, it simply says in Section Four, "To be eligible to hold the office of City Court Judge as provided by Article Six, Section Six of the Constitution of the State of Indiana, the judge must be a resident of the city during the term of office or the office becomes vacant." And since the residency issue has been bandied about, I think you have an obligation to make that determination. Because if, for instance, if the residency requirements were not met, you have to ask yourself, what happens to all those court cases? What happens to any appointments that were made by the judge? What happens like to your whole court system? So there's potential for a lot of chaos. So I think you gotta answer the comments that Mayor McDermott has raised about residency based on that statute I just told you. Because as you go forward, you got two problems. One is with the validity of that ordinance. The other is the validity of whether residency is an issue in this case. And I think that's something that demands immediate attention. You shouldn't let that drift away and not address it. So I thank you so much for the privilege of talking.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr.?
Unprecedented, dear in public comment. Mister, first off, I want to thank you for approving the Lear Corporation agreement for the incentive package. Secondly, Mister Hero brought up two points that I talked earlier to four of the council people about. First point being the judge's residency issue. We're all aware of what the Indiana Code says. I agree with Mister Hero's assessment of it, so does corporate counsel of the City of Hammond. And if she ever did file a suit against us, we would definitely challenge her residency and whether or not she's even entitled to sit in that chair. Second issue is in regards to the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen issue. The ordinance that was passed by the Hammond City Council said that we were gonna wrap up court operations by December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. You know, all along, we know, we knew and we know now that we were always committed to funding the judge's salary through December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. I want to make that clear. That was never at issue. The question is whether or not, as Mister Hero says, we have to update our ordinance so that it also reflects two thousand nineteen. But I want to make something clear. Mister Hero has a really good point. I appreciate him for bringing this up. We never intended, and I'm saying this on the record, Judge Jorgensen is gonna get paid through December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. That's her right. She was appointed unless she's challenged and removed from office. She is entitled to hold that position until December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. That was never in doubt. The ordinance wrapped up operations by December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. The question is, do we have to do another ordinance to show that we intend to pay her through two thousand nineteen? So I hope we made that clear. I appreciate what Mister Hero is bringing up to you. I think it's important what he's saying and I know Attorney Cantor and I are having conversations. We spoke with some council people earlier today about this situation, so I think it's important and that's why I wanted to follow him up, so thank you.
Thank you. Final speaker of the evening, George Stoya. He'll take a pass. Public expression is now closed. Motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Motion by Councilman Rakos, second by who? Councilman Spitali to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Have a good evening.